...of time to address all the needs to try to diminish those accidents that are happening across the parish and the town.
Okay, Lorraine, thanks so much, because y'all know we have had some fatalities crossing the highway there, especially they happen at night and maybe some type of, you know, they're gonna, hold it for a minute, I can let you go here. And so this would be something that as a community, we can get together and try to set up some safe spots where people can cross the highway and maybe some, you know, something, really some warnings, you know, better that would let people know, especially at night, a crossway so they could cross. One quick thing, a lot of questions, and I hate, and that, it's on this summer food program.
Yes.
This, we're waiting on the state, they're so backlog with calls and stuff, and there's so many people participating in that. Look at the phone number on there, there's a number on our website, call that number for any kind of updates or when the food, we should start receiving it, because we're waiting on that call too, we're calling that same number to find out when they're gonna deliver the food. So that's it, thank you, Lorraine.
The lady's name, the director's name is Mary Manchester, so she's very kind, she'll be able to answer any questions about that.
Okay, all right, thank you so much, I appreciate that. Now, do I hear motion, we accept that resolution?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Alderman Gardner, here second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Dembie, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank y'all very much. Okay, number nine is board discussion vote on fixing the amount to be maintained in hydro fund in accordance with ordinance number 588. Ordinance 588 requires the council every June to approve an amount of the reserve fund to go in a hydro plant to allow for low water conditions, and it requires you two months of your highest use to put that in reserve. And this year, I think that amount would be required to be 1,980,000, but we keep 2.3 million in it, which is more than the required amount. I would like to recommend to the council that y'all make a motion to leave it the same, no change to it, if they would, leave it 2.3.
I make the motion.
Motion made by Alderman Betts, here second. Second by Alderman Probst, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now here's the introduction of an ordinance to amend the operating budget of revenues and expenses for Town of Badaia, Louisiana, for the fiscal year 2022-23. It doesn't require any action tonight, however, I do want to ask the council, let's set up a time for the special meeting and date, and this shouldn't be something but a five or 10 minute unless y'all have questions, you know, about the amendments and that we need to do. It'd be a narrative, Deborah went over a little bit of them tonight. Is there any questions or require, which y'all would like to see us do? We can do a lunch at 12 o'clock or 1:00, whatever, whatever's y'all's pleasure. But we will have to have a special meeting and get that approved after we do the unnecessary advertisements.
I like the 12.
Y'all like the 12 o'clock, y'all want, Jay, what's that first date's gonna be available? We could probably do that.
Between the 21st and 30th.
21st and 30th?
From the 22nd through the 30th.
Okay. Did y'all like a Friday? Their Fridays are pretty, or Wednesday even.
Friday.
Friday.
Hmm?
Friday.
Friday? Friday, the, what is that Friday?
23rd.
23rd, okay, is that okay? Y'all shoot for that?
I'm on B here. I'm gonna be out of town.
Is anybody else gonna, they're gonna be out of town? We just have to have a forum.
Not that I know of.
Okay, all right, well, we'll shoot 10 until, for.
23rd.
23rd, 12 o'clock? 12 o'clock, is that okay? Okay. All right, thank y'all. Now we're gonna have a public hearing on an ordinance adopt the operating budget of revenues and expenses for the Town of Badaia for the fiscal year 2023-24, and at this time, we enter into a public hearing where the floor is open for people to comment on anything to do with our budget this year. So do I hear motion, we go into public hearing?
I make the motion.
Okay, I heard Alderman Dembie, I've heard second, do you want second Alderman Gardner? Second by Alderman Gardner, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, when public hearing, anybody out wants to talk on the budget, would like to ask about the budget.
Oh, imagine that. Have y'all, we don't have any processing, any plans, any funds available for the purchase of the hydro plant, if that is what y'all have decided to do, because you know that is rapidly approaching, or any funds being put in place to help mitigate the loss of revenue, once the Town of Badaia no longer has the share of the hydro plant because the Town of Badaia decided to not purchase. Have y'all started looking into?
We, we are talking to stakeholders that deal with our power, public power attorneys, and talking, beginning the discussion on putting together a commission that will actually, of people within the town and people that I think we trust, that will make sure we make that right decision. You know, the monies will be there strictly from the, the monies from the hydro that will be accumulating, that will be, we will be accumulating to do that, whatever that might be. Yeah, the revenues are certainly gonna drop unless power goes crazy between here and 2030, but we were, we are planning on making a very, very, put together a very smart team of people who, you know, especially, one of the smartest people having this thing is gonna be public power attorneys who deal with this and know the law, FERC attorneys, Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. Those people that can know those ins and outs are gonna be those people we're gonna engage and have on our team to help us make the right decision for the citizens of the town, because we'll be in the catbird seat, as they say, the proverbial catbird, to have the, you know, we're gonna be the ones that can own the plant.
Right.
And it's gonna be a very valuable asset, not only for our town, but for this whole region and the state, and actually the whole south. And unless some things change in the energy sector with MISO and the grid and that thing, I tell you, one of the things also I think we need to be looking at possibly, is the town having all these excess reserves, maybe having a solar farm that would, could handle just our residential load, that would be a big, big thing, and be a big plus, and it, we could certainly afford it. Got something working now with Cajun Fire, which is a project that, if somebody wants, I think I introduced it last time, that town was the conceptual town for that, getting that project, which is a total of $100 million project. The town would have to invest 20 or 25 million, but we would own the plant, not only the hydro farm, but also the hydrogen part of it. They wanna process and store hydrogen, have batteries in other locations that the Town of Badaia would own. It's a big project, but we would own that, and it would be a $100 million project, and we would only have $20 million in it, and it'd be a $100 million project. It would bring the income off of it, right now it's tentatively around, and don't, this is off the record, because, you know, again, it's, it would be 7.8 million dollars a year, just income, that's profit. So that would be a pretty good investment for the town, if you ask me. But again, it's a lot of, it's on the ground floor, this, we're working with University of Lafayette on this, their solar team, also Southern University at Freeport's working with us, because there's some community development portions of this, which it's very exciting to look at. I went to New Orleans here recently for some of the meetings, meeting with them on that, and it's, it's a pretty big deal, and don't know the status of it, but anyway, we're looking at a lot of avenues on that, so.
So the plan is then to purchase hydro, if the investment looks like it would make business.
Absolutely, yeah, I mean, that was, I mean, and again, you know, do we wanna be owners of the hydro plant, have the maintenance over, or do we wanna continue in looking at, hey, okay, we want this, we wanna make sure we got a continued income stream for our citizens, where you're gonna enjoy that 50% discount off, you know, if we can guarantee that. And I think if we're smart with the monies that we're gonna get off the royalties off of it for the next seven or eight years, well, that should be an easy, that should be an easy deal, that really should, so, anyway. Okay, and by the way, while you're here, I was waiting to get the budget approved, and we'll get you a check on the fireworks, we left the, you know, same amount in there. I thought that's what you was gonna ask. Okay, all right, anybody else in public have a question on the budget? Before we jurn out of that part of it and go into our council discussion? Okay, do I hear, do I have motion, we exit the public hearing?
I make it.
Motion made by, not John Betts, I mean Alderman Betts, sorry, uh, and a second?
A second.
Second by Alderman Smith, all in favor say aye. Y'all work with me.
You don't sit here and all night.
All right, now we gotta come to a board discussion vote on an ordinance adopting the operating budget of revenues and expenses for the Town of Badaia, Louisiana, for the fiscal year 2023-24. I'd like to, we have all of our department heads and supervisors here tonight, if any of them want to say something, or if any of the council want, they don't want each one of them to do what we've have in the past, and let them get up and speak, or do you want, just if you have questions of them, do y'all want to just call them up as needed, and just for the sake of time, or anything like that? How do y'all wanna do that?
I said let the individual, the partner heads get up and speak to us, and then let the Alderman go later.
Okay. Everybody else wanna do that?
The practice.
Okay. All right, I guess we'll go with, let's start with street department lead, you wanna tell them what you've got, on you and your, and your capital outlay?
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. What the, the first request that I would like to ask for the board, for the street sanitation department, it's gonna be the sanitation department, we're using the 2002 International Garbage Truck right now, it's a single axle truck, holds about 10 tons, and it's a 2002 model, and this thing is getting really old, it's a, a truck that we swapped a police car, Scott, take it back, we swapped two police cars to Johnson Park, we've had it for a number of years, and it's getting really old, and we talked during our budget meetings about replacing that truck with a used truck for around $100,000, hoping we can get something in the, in the newer range of 2015 or something like that to, to replace. We're using it as a spare truck, so we still have our other two trucks that we use, but we always need a spare in case one of our other trucks break down. The second request that I would like to make for the sanitation department, we're using the, we have three grapple trucks, knuckle boom trucks, as y'all know right now, our oldest one is a 2006 model, my God, we've hauled millions of tons of trash to the landfill with this thing. It's one of the first things that I bought when I took over the street sanitation superintendent job, because we were hauling deep freezes, refrigerators, couches, and wood, and limbs and stuff on a flatbed truck. So that was one of the things, first things that I wanted to try to get for our guys down there, so they could do a job more efficient. So I'd like to replace that 2006 grapple truck, and I would put it at y'all's discretion whether it's something that we wanted to keep as a spare, or we wanted to, wanted to sell it, so I mean, it's, it's probably a truck that somebody would want down the road, so.
And what, let me make a point right now, because these things that they're asking for tonight is in the budget, so we, you know, they're in there, and through our meetings with them, so what you, what you've got in your numbers here, it does have these asked, so, go ahead.
Second, the third thing I wanna ask for is that we're, our newest tractor that we have, that we cut grass with is a 2006, our oldest is a 2000 model, so we're operating those, those old tractors, and they're starting to give us a lot of trouble. I got one in the shop right now, replacing the sidearm knuckle boom parts of it, so we're gonna get it back tomorrow, hopefully, so what I'd like to do is, is I got a state contract price on a new air-conditioned four-wheel-drive bush hog with 16-foot bush hog on the back of it, it's running anywhere between $87 to $90,000, so I would really like to, you know, really need to replace those, those tractor, that tractor. And I'd also like to get a cross-the-board raise for all of our employees down there. We got some, some guys that do great jobs down there for us, we, we, our town right now is as clean as it's possibly ever been, so with those guys, we have averages for, I mean, we're talking about off from the street sanitation department to the utility department, we have the best services in the state of Louisiana, so I'd like to get a cross-the-board raise for those guys. If y'all got any questions for me?
Any questions for Lee?
Feel free to answer them.
No questions for Lee? All right, Lee, thank you. All right, next is Joey on the police takes? Police budget? I'm going down as I got on pages, that's how I'm going.
I didn't bring any of my paperwork, really, but I'll try to answer any questions on y'all that you may have on what we got. I think we got tasers, some new software for the, for the phone, to do more stuff with, you know, I didn't write on my paperwork, really.
What, I mean, you wanted to, I wanted you to go ahead and talk to them a little bit about, you was wanting the, the old ambulance from the fire station.
Yeah, yeah.
So I wanted you to talk to them about, you know, and I asked Joey to do that, he, you know, is, is my initial thing, when I, when he said they wanted to make a SWAT unit out of it, I'm going like, well, we're in Badaia, you know, you don't have buildings and skyscrapers, and, but you know, the more he talked to me about it, I saw the need that they could use it for, so I wanted the council to hear it, so when they see this, they didn't wanna say, well, we didn't know anything about it, I want them to know a little bit about what's going on, and then okay that approval, so.
Yeah, we're wanting the ambulance to put all of our SRT gear in, have it at one location, lots of mobile, mobile unit, if something happens at a business or whatever, one guy can get that ambulance with all our equipment in it, go to that location, and all our guys can utilize it, because we have, we have a ton of equipment that we would have to go get out of the office, get it all together, when we could just get it at the location that we're gonna be utilizing that. And I'd say this gets all, get all locks, all them boxes on the outside, lock good, for what we need it for, it'd be wonderful, we could greatly use it.
Any questions for the chief? Okay, all right, Joey, thank you, appreciate it. All right, I think next we have, I think the, fire department is, who's here with the fire department?
The chief.
There he is, Johnny, I didn't see you. You was hiding.
He's only here once a month when he asks for money.
Yeah. That wasn't right.
He's fart biting, but, no, we've got an old piece of equipment, the jaws of life, which everyone knows what the jaws of life are for, for accidents, we just use some of it up here on accident, we had just a week and a half ago, I think it was, where a vehicle lost control and wound up there in front of the Pizza Hut place there, Johnny's Pizza, they had to utilize some of the jaws of life for that as well. But the one we've got right now, I got here in 91, and this piece of equipment was here then, and it works off of hydraulics, it's got a gas motor, you gotta keep it cranked, make sure the gas is good in it, but now they've come out with the new ones now, to where they're battery operated, so that you don't have a hose having to run around with you, behind you, tripping over it or anything, making sure the carburetor's clean, it's battery in it, you change batteries, and you got several batteries there on standby. It's for a cutter, it's for spreaders, it's got rams, we're actually gonna have a class Friday with the Hurst Tools guy, he's gonna come and do a demonstration for us, and, because it's a.
What's the cost of it?
Uh, right around $40,000 is what the cost is gonna wind up being for it. We can still use our old ones if we wanna have it for a backup, but I think honestly, if we get these other ones, we've already used them, and district has got some battery-operated ones that, right now, they love them, and it's way better for maintenance, you don't have to worry about, is it gonna crank, stay running or not? I mean, on a scene with the other one, you crank it up and it dies, you can't use it no more.
Yeah, 'cause I understand y'all had to get, I think we had, our utility office actually helped y'all with some of them.
They did, they were there, right.
They, they had to use their hydraulics on their buckets and stuff to help y'all.
Right, they helped with that, yeah.
Yeah.
Sure did.
That was a good, that was a good job, guys, by the way, I mean, y'all, that was.
It took a little while to get him out, but I mean, once they got him out, everything was great, I mean, the kid was definitely fortunate to me.
And one other thing I wanna show, just how that works, y'all realize we had a fire this past week, and one of our citizens was seriously injured, and, you know, there was a pet lost in, in the blaze, but some of our workers actually went in and got these animals, where they risking their own lives to get them.
Yeah.
And Keith Graves was one of them, and I think Cornell, Lewis, they got out some of the animals, and I wanted to, again, that's, that's working together as a town, when you have, these guys show up and throw in a hand, and y'all do a great job, Johnny, I just wanna say that.
Thank you.
We wanna make sure y'all have good equipment to work with, or whatever.
Right, I mean, it sounds expensive, but I mean, it's, when you need it, you need it, and.
We could be the next one's called, and need to be gotten out, yeah.
Exactly. And one other thing that I'd mention to you and Jay and Miss Moke and everything, is trying to do something with the old fire station down there, it's just old and out of date, out of room, you know, whatever we might can do, remodeling it or whatever, you know, get a little more room for it and everything like that.
I think a renovation is in order, I think that, I think we'd be foolish not to renovate it.
Right.
Because I was gonna talk a bit, a little bit, a little bit, when we get to the water sector, what's fixing to happen there with the water plant, and that whole area can be really, really made nice, and make it even nicer, since it's gonna be right adjacent to our water plant.
Right.
Because there are things there that, you know, that could have, then we would have a problem at the water plant, y'all would need to respond to, so.
Yeah.
But I, have you got any kind of estimates, or are we working on those now?
No, I'm talking to a lady right now, you know, well, we, first we talked to, who was, yeah, we called, what's her name, Simon? Architect, yeah, we had an architect, she come and looked at it, and we brought her to the news station, just to give her an idea about the sleeping arrangements and the restrooms and the showers and stuff like that.
Let me go and ask this, because it does bug me when we go by there, that old fire truck that's there, does the council wanna look at restoring that and doing something with it, or moving it?
Yes.
Huh?
Restoring, every grade. I think that would be phenomenal.
Okay, all right.
Sounds great, I was gonna ask y'all about it, but I didn't.
Well, I mean, we, we had talked about it, but I go by it every day, and I'm going like, you know, that could, that could really be a.
I mean, it's an ice hole, but it could be something that's real pretty too.
Yeah.
I mean, would be.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be an expense, I mean, you know, you hear what people spend on these antique cars, it's gonna be an expensive endeavor, but it will.
And if you're gonna use it, especially in a parade, just got to be reliable.
Yeah. How's the council feel, y'all wanna try to do something like that?
I think we gotta renovate, it was, it was special to Deb's dad, Royce, 'cause he was one of the first ones to ride that thing.
Oh, really?
And back as an volunteer.
I'm sure he's got some stories to tell.
He was one of the first ones to ride that, he always, when it went by, he said, I used to ride that thing, you know, so I'd like to see us, I think it's a good, it's a good thing to have, yeah.
Well, Johnny, let's, let's, let's look at that, see what it required, does it have a motor in it?
It does, it does, but I don't know what kinda shakes us all.
All right, we'll, we'll, we'll take, we'll do that, but that would be something, since it is general fund, we'll, that's not in his budget, we'll look at and get estimates and come back to the council for approval if they wanna do that.
And I was gonna go along with what Lee also said about the cross-the-board raise, if y'all can see, something for that.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you, Johnny. All right, next we're gonna have, see, Keith, your old mechanic shop, I don't, is that, are they requesting any capital outlay this year? No, okay, they're not, they're requesting anything, mechanic shop. All right, what about Bobby on IT?
We just wanna continue with the upgrade of the computers, we're doing like, excuse me, 30 computers a year, so that by the end of 2024, all computers will be capable of upgrading to Windows 11, when Windows 10 goes end of life. That's one item. Second item is some software to track our fiber. Third item is building a little bit more fiber, but the spreadsheets that we're using are getting kinda onerous to, to deal with, so they have some software that allows you to map and keep track of where all your fiber is going and how it's connected. As we're using more and more of the fiber for the cameras and such as that, it's just.
Let them know where we're at on that camera project, you know, council approved putting cameras throughout town.
We have a total of 32 in, in functional right now, along the riverfront, LPRs at the, at the entrance to the eastbound bridge and the exit from the westbound bridge, let's see, we also have cameras to the entrance and exits of the riverfront, then along the riverwalk, also down the, the dock that they just built for the cruise ship, Clarion Suites Hotels parking lot, and we have crews here now, they're building, they just put four cameras today on the pier, we had some cameras out there, but they were old, and they were using a wireless connection that was not very good, so we have four on the pier, we'll, we'll have three right out front here in the, at the corner of the municipal complex and Highway 84, we'll have LPRs there, plus regular cameras, and then we'll have LPRs and cameras at Logan Sewell and River Road, and that, and that way, the three ways, really, the main three ways in and out of town, we'll have LPRs on, which are license plate reader cameras, and then we'll have cameras at Advocate Row and Highway 84, we have cam, we'll have cameras at Murray Drive and 84, and we'll have cameras at North Spruce and 84, at Linder and MLK, Gillespie and MLK, Logan Sewell and MLK, and then once we get the fiber completed on the south side, which has been worked on for the last couple of weeks, they have run all the cable, and now they'll start splicing probably next week on that, but that's, that's where we are with the cameras, and that's where we are with that state-funded fiber project on the south side.
Okay, all right.
That's about it.
Okay, any questions from Bobby on IT?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I know it's not my turn either, I'm sorry. Oh, have y'all considered putting in emergency call boxes along the riverfront? I know most people have cell phone nowadays, but if there's ever an event where somebody's jogging, or someone's up there and needs immediate assistance, and perhaps can't get out to their cell phone, having a call box spread out?
I hadn't give a thought just trick, because everybody there does have a phone or wrist phone, or.
Thought about it, I mean, 99.9% of the people that I've seen walk there have cell phone.
And it only really came to my mind when LSU, when Johnny was at LSU, they have those call boxes everywhere, you know every college kid has a cell phone, but they were actually utilized much more than I realized, when, especially young women, just pretty, felt unsafe, because a lot of times what people do to protect themselves, they are using their cell phone to record what is happening, and then having that ability to just pick up the phone and immediately call the police department or riverfront security through the fiber optic channel is what, is the way the call box is on the LSU campus work, you pick it up and it automatically connection with Kansas Police, because they do have their cell phones, but generally what people are doing more and more nowadays, when something is occurring or happens to them, they wanna record it though, so they opt to record rather than call, which is not always the smartest, but that's what's happening.
We'll, we'll, we'll certainly discuss it and see what, what the response is, I mean, if the council wants to pursue it, we certainly will, I mean, it's whatever they wanna do.
I am a will-o, I am flexible, so whatever, whatever they wanna do, we've got capacity on there to do whatever we need to do.
All right.
Any other questions?
Any other questions for Bobby? All right, next, Joe, I think Joe, come on, yeah, Joe's here.
Recreation.
Very simple, I got a mower approaching in 1800 hours, and so I'm just requesting one domet mower to replace that.
Okay, all right, any questions for Joe? Look, y'all have done, y'all, y'all have done a good job on maintaining those fields, I, you can't find a parking spot over there on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday night, so.
Little shower yesterday actually helped tremendously.
I bet it did, I bet it did. All right, thank you, Joe, any questions? Okay, all right, next we got, okay, city court's not here, okay, any questions on city court? Any questions on ambulance?
I know, city court, at one time, they was, something with a recorder, something about the ceiling, they was repairing, ceiling for maybe mold or something, have all that been completed and done?
They've done.
About the recorder, they were giving that for sale, but the building repair.
Building repair's been done, it's been a while, hasn't it?
Okay.
Yeah, that's all we know. Ambulance, what did, what did the ambulance have, Johnny, did y'all have anything on your ask?
What's that?
On the ambulance, other than, you got a brand-new ambulance, you shouldn't have to ask for them.
We've already got the equipment we needed with that.
Okay, all right. All right, city marshal's not here, don't think there was an ask on that. Oh. Hydro, sales tax, we've talked about, and. Let's go ahead and get, Brian, you wanna come on up, talk a little bit about the port?
Sure, sure. So, good evening, Mayor Alderman, thank you for having me. The ports request is gonna be tied to our ability to access. Um, the porch request is gonna be tied to our ability to access capital outlay funds. Um, this was, this, around about this amount was in the budget for, uh, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, we left it out last year once we realized the Army Corps Engineers timeline as far as, uh, their review and meeting certain criteria and the process that they have to go through to approve a project like this. Uh, we're at the end of the permitting phase, actually engineers supposed to be, um, submitting full design to them by the end of this week, early next week. After they review internally, typically they will, um, require mitigation credits to be obtained before we go out for RFP. That RFP will be a ninety-day process and then we'll begin construction. Any questions?
Any questions for Brian? All right, Brian, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, next we're gonna have Keith with electric department. This is the easy part of your job. He says it's the hardest part.
I didn't give you my folder, so, so I had to write this down, Mr. Johnny told me shouldn't be doing it. Anyway, in my packet I have, uh, also have the Corcoran shop. Corcoran requesting a portable, uh, generator, which is on a trailer, which is in there. We do have one on truck, but it's not, won't stay running and it's several years old. I do not know how long it's been there, but, uh, this one's set up to be mounted to the trailer naked. That way, any department, street department, which uses it also, can just hook it to the trailer and pull it to where it needs to be located. Biggest item on my list is, uh, is doing the update on the city substation, one operates us right now, not the one that's still in DAB light. Uh, it's thirty years old and there are components they tell me I need to address, which they come out of the southern states, which is Georgia, we do the work, they order us the stuff and they send their technicians to show us, make sure how we do it. So that's one of the biggest items on the list. Uh, I still didn't get the portable air compressor that I asked for last because, uh, price has gone up on them, so I think I'll ask Ms. Deborah for twenty-five thousand because they're, uh, used ones, we can't find one for the price. Um, I got down our safety equipment, which is, uh, stuff that we ordered to pull meters, it's in there. Uh, that way you'll, it controls the flash if a meter goes bad, when the, uh, even getting one for the city workers that pull meters, the cut people, whatever, for when you pull it, if it happens to go bad, it contains the flash, even though you do have your gloves and hard hat on. Uh, also have, uh, replacement tubes, we got like squeeze tubes that we use to make the connections on the lines and they're battery-operated, that way we're not dealing with hoses and tang them up or having them break and shoot hydraulic fluid out everywhere. That's usually what the standards, we have them now, but they're being sent off constantly, not one or two times a year, maybe once, I'm sorry, uh, being repaired and, or getting, need to be replaced. Also, uh, even though we're already in this, uh, we have our apprentices are going to Lima School for five years through LEAP and they're already in there, so, but the price of the school is.
Five thousand.
Already paid for or we pay that each time?
It's five thousand a piece.
I think we already paid it, anyway, the other ones, meter and school, that's a three-year course, but that gets paid each year, they go to Texas A&amp;M Meter and School to learn and certify to troubleshoot meters or customers have a question on it and all that. Uh, I don't know if Bobby has it, he has, uh, one of the other things was, I brought it up to, uh, I would like security cameras placed at our substation, because it's isolated where it is and if you hadn't heard on the news up north, somebody has shot, uh, substation transformer with a high-end rifle, put a hole in it, oh, fell, came out and burned the boat, they, in order to shut down the town, you can't get a substation transformer like that. The cameras won't prevent it, but it could, uh, be monitored to be able to tell somebody's messing around.
That would be a federal offense, somebody'd be pretty foolish to get caught on.
Yes, sir, well, thank you, we'll catch them if they shooting it way out there.
I've got, I've got the fire and then to the substation and, uh, just trying to talk to people that that'll be part of the camera work, we're doing now, we aren't gonna put six cameras in the substation. My, my main concern is exactly where we're gonna put them. I guess I really don't want these guys straightened wire, having with high tension lines all around, so we're probably putting on four corners of the yard, and one looking at the outside of the building and then one on the inside of the truck.
Those, those things have a timestamp on them, if something happened, you would have a timestamp on when that, when that went down, you could also, you know, somebody, and like you said, you have license plate readers going in and out of Logan Sewell, yeah, they would be pretty.
And the only other way we'd be notified is with LEAP monitors or system like they did yesterday.
Told you how that out.
Then we had, we had a power failure yesterday before we even got called, because they called me and said, you missing several percent, I said, then you call. Then we found all circuit phones out. But there's some other things there, I'm sorry, didn't have them with me at this time.
I do wanna say right now, people that might listen, uh, on, whether it's YouTube or Facebook, follow the town, you know, on Facebook, because we do try, when we do have an outage or something, we do try to inform people how long it's gonna be, what it is, and, you know, also give them a chance to respond back, you know, as far as they didn't get power back, there were two or three residences after that yesterday, didn't have it, we was able to get that over there right away and get them seen about, so, you know, follow the town, you know, and if you're on Facebook and following, you can kinda keep up with a lot of these things, but anyway.
And if they see it, it'd be great if they let us know, anything that broke down.
Because that, and that, say, calls when you guys, if they just watch that and we'll keep them posted, because I, you're calling me constantly, telling me, hey, this is what it's gonna do, and I try to relay that out there too, so, anyway.
Yes.
Is that it?
Yes.
Any questions for Keith? Okay, Keith, y'all doing a great job, I really do appreciate it, thank you. All right, next we got, uh, the gas department, I don't see Eddie's not here. Uh, Deborah, what did Eddie have in his, uh, ask this year? Oh, you got a Cornell, cool, okay, good, thank you. All right.
Gotta do it all.
All right, you and me.
Uh, the gas department there requesting a new ditch which, you know, is around seventeen thousand. Uh, they doing the gas upgrading, you know, in around twenty thousand, which they already have done yet, you know. Uh, they requesting sixteen thousand five hundred dollars for, uh, sandblasting, painting all five, uh, regulated stations throughout towns. And, uh, there's other monies included, uh, for four chart recorders and twenty-four annos for cathodic protection on our gas, uh, mains, uh, which that, uh, totals, you know, approximately, uh, fifty-five thousand.
Okay. That's all on the gas?
That's all on the gas.
Okay, any question on the gas department? All right, before you start with water, I got great news, uh, as y'all know, we were, uh, we were going to look at doubling our water plant and the project's coming in right at nine million dollars, you know? And we have got, and it's been approved by the senate to get state capital outlay to give us nine million dollars to do that. So, that is a great, great news, and I wanna give thanks to, uh, Senator Womack, uh, our representative Travis Johnson, but Glenn Womack is our state senator. And I also wanna give special thanks to one of the men who made this happen, who's no longer in, in, uh, the legislature, but it was in there a long time and still has a lot of stroke, is Brian Hammond. Brian actually went to John Bell Edwards and invited me to go along with him and the governor put it in on his bill and it's, it, it got taken off, but, but Brian was in conversation with these people and he got it back on along with the help of Senator Womack and, and Representative Travis Johnson, and they got it done. Now, all we're waiting on, once it gets signed into law, which should be sometime in July, uh, and we get, should get a funding letter, we can start, we got a process we gotta go through, uh, with our, uh, facilities planning, that we have some hoops we gotta jump through, but it's gonna be funded and that is a great thing for our town. So that's gonna be double us, our water plant size, it's gonna be a new plant plus a refurbished. Once that's built and starts operating, they're gonna completely redo the older one, so we'll have, we can process two million gallons of water. And, and so it's a good deal, so. And the monies that we spent on our substation counted as our match on that overall global. Oh, and they added seven more million dollars into priority five, which we can use for future projects, but they'll have to go through whoever's gonna be governor and the senate at that time, so. But anyway, that's great news, I don't know if y'all have heard that yet, but. Thank, uh, thanks to those guys, really.
Uh, I just wanna, uh, you know, thank y'all for y'all's hard work on trying to get this, uh, water plant project funded or whatever. Uh, I know we've been working tirelessly, you know, at our old water plant, I've been working long when I was myself. You don't know, my wife mad at me all the time. But, uh, I mean, we have been working tirelessly, you know, with the old plant or whatever, you know, try to, you know, perfect what we have, you know? So when we do get this new plant or whatever, it'll be a smooth transition. So, uh, I just wanna give, you know, thanks to, you know, my operators, you know, and their dedication and they're very motivated, you know, I just wanna say that. But, uh, uh, my water budget, you know, I've got the, uh, water sewer combined, uh, the total amount is, uh, one point eight five million. Uh, the biggest, uh, expense is the water well raising on the riverfront. You know, basically that'll help ensure that, uh, we can have the water, you know, if we have a flood, you know, again, and, uh, that's basically consisting of raising our wells, uh, six feet, you know, and that's, uh, redoing all of our, uh, electrical infrastructure, whatever, uh, pertaining to the wells. Got thirty-six million, I mean, thirty-six thousand, uh, for our sewer lift stations. Basically, we're wanting to put, uh, skater systems on our, uh, main lift station, basically to monitor it, you know, twenty-four hours a day or whatever, to try to, you know, uh, curb some of the, uh, upcoming problems or whatever, you know, before, uh, we get caught and citizens or whatever. But, um, we got a lawnmower that we want to, uh, get, you know, basically it'll be like utility part of, uh, why, uh, for seven, seven thousand. Uh, we want a spray tractor, uh, which is twenty-three thousand. And we got a, uh, forklift, uh, in the budget, which is a hundred twenty-seven thousand. Uh, basically, you know, we, you know, it's a, uh, a citywide thing because the, uh, two forklifts we actually have or whatever, it's really become a safety hazard and, uh, you know, it definitely need to be replaced, so. Um, I got sixty thousand for the, you know, irrigation maintenance at the sewer lagoon. Got, uh, seventy-five thousand to replace, uh, sewer lift station at, uh, Cypress Point because it's in very bad shape and, uh, it can go in and out, I'm just being honest, so, uh. And we, I got, you know, ten thousand, uh, for concrete slab, basically to, uh, you know, house some of our supplies, you know, on the yard, just basically just relocated. Uh, got, uh, nine thousand for, uh, updated gas mess for our guys, you know, uh, at the water plant that's dealing with the water and the sewer, you know, when they're around chlorine gas. So, uh, we wanna do our part to protect the, you know, the guys or whatever on that and, uh, increase travel budget, you know, for the apprenticeship program and the students that we, uh, require to have for, you know, our operator. So, uh, that concludes my budget.
Okay.
I appreciate y'all for, uh, you know, working with us, you know, and everything, you know, anytime I come asking for some money or whatever, you know, I mean, it never, uh, I don't know, you know? But, uh, I can guarantee you this, you can see where it's been spent.
We wanna keep drinking the water and bathing and cooking and. And doing all the other things the sewer does. Any questions of Cornell? Okay, all right, next is, uh, this is the last one, we'll finish up, Ms. Regina at the convention center?
We did, I wanna say something, we did get our backup machine on, uh, Davis Dam Port.
Uh huh.
And this came very handy, so we couldn't get a, a pair of fence down or anything, we were going in, set a hose, set a trench going. If anyone knows, we did get it purchased, you know, approved last year.
It took, took over a year to get it, yeah, took it over here. Okay, Regina.
Good evening. The first thing I'd like to discuss is our floors. We received an estimate of two hundred and ten thousand dollars. The floors will be corrected in portions, you know, it'll be done in one time because of the events we had, because we are booked every weekend through December as of now. But, C and C has proposed to remove all stains from the floor. After they get all the stains and the scratches, then they will start repairs. They're going to use an acetate dye stain to color the floors. After coloring, they're gonna go back and polish the floors. And like I said, it's all done in stages. The last thing they're gonna be doing is to apply polished gar and furnish it in the flooring. And this is supposed to make everything look pretty, you know, you won't have to go back and do it for a long time. Um, but what it's gonna look like is maintenance-free polished concrete flooring. Now, I don't know what y'all, I don't know much about the flooring thing here, but this is his proposal, this is what he's told he's gonna do.
Did you get more than one bid, did you get more than one?
We have two more coming, but I have not received any yet, I called them twice.
Well, let's, I, I would like to get two more bids and I would also like to have whoever does it is take a test spot within those things and see, and not the most important thing they ask is, what is gonna be the warranty on this for the work they do, and what is it gonna do for the floors that we, that will be less maintenance or things of that nature? I would be, I'd wanna know, you know, those things in addition to their, um, their qualifications and insurances and.
Um, we also talked with Mark Carter concerning all the doors that, uh, has spits and stuff over the water, just piled in on when it runs hard. Had Marcus propose that he could do the job for nineteen thousand, and he's gonna use weather painting, weather stripping, weatherproofing. He's gonna resell all the doors on the sidewalk, which is, is totally got big open center. So he has proposed nineteen thousand.
Okay.
Um, let's see. He's also looked at our handicap ramps, he has given us a quarter, four thousand six hundred and sixty-five dollars to correct all that. Um, let's see. Glass pillars, skates, have a quote of fourteen thousand to correct the thresholds, the sweeps, the doors, and glass on the rear side. Yeah, that is all that I had for you. That's for us correcting all the problems at the building.
Okay.
Because, because of the shifting of the building, that's why we have so many cracks on our doors and the water she comes in and it's wet and the rain.
We really had some bad leaks after, after the freeze, we had some stuff really getting in the building, almost flooded, bad, but.
It's really bad if you have an event, it's raining.
Yeah.
The wind's pushing in on the plants.
Okay. All right, any questions of Ms. Regina?
Yeah, I have a question.
Okay, sure.
Did I understand you to say that you are booked every weekend through December?
Actually, the first two months of twenty-four also.
We are gonna look at doing some other maintenance in there, painting inside, you know, brighten it up a little bit, I'm making it softer instead of that dark green, we're gonna look at doing some more things, but we're not gonna make that decision ourselves, we're gonna get some people that can tell you what, what it needs to be and that, and they're gonna go in and choose a color, so.
All right.
But anyway, all right, thank you, Regina. All right, now, that concludes. All right, now, that concludes us talking to all of our department heads. I'll just leave it to open discussion of the alderman to open any discussion on, on the budget.
I have a...
Sure.
...for the three aldermen. You just mentioned something about we need to stay informed by looking at Facebook and YouTube as a way of keeping up what's going on today. Okay, you know, you know, we know everybody doesn't look at Facebook and YouTube and we haven't tried to come up with how are we going to assist the citizens that don't use these tools, these people.
What, uh, the only other way is through an internet, our internet, our website and maybe have an information thing on it.
Senior citizens and other people may not look at internet, may not have. Some people still don't have computers. We need to find a way, as you've been talking about this, to just help people stay informed that doesn't have Facebook or the internet. Remember the lady that lived on Oak Street? Who's that lady she got?
There's been a lot of ladies live on Oak Street, Miss...
You know, the bee you put like at the bank and it flashes the message?
A message, okay.
You were talking about Vivian Bradford and she was asking for a marquee board.
Is she on Oak Street?
Yes.
I don't know. I see her call, a really smart older lady that had a good time for a phone call.
We got, we got the code red phone deal that's most people wanted on the, on that, you know. Well, we've, we've got the, we've got the code, we've got the code red that, you know, that warns people of the, you know, but just the things of a power outage or something like that, they can still, if they got a phone, they can pick up the phone and call if they get, really got a question. So we got, we got dispatchers at the police station, we got workers down at the water plant, got a phone number that we pick, you know, that...
You know, electricity, they have, you talk...
If they're old dry, we have to tell them.
Okay, and there's, and if they're older people that don't have means, there's, there's a way to get, I mean, they, I'm sure they have a, maybe a house line or something. I mean, so. I don't have a house phone no more, just have one... Okay, is that it? Is that what you had? Okay, all right. Okay, well, we'll look at options for it. We'll look at options for that. All right, now, we, we'll divert to the alderman. Any aldermen have comments or questions on the budget?
You want to start on one hand? You want to start on one hand?
I think, I mean, we just... John, you had mentioned something to make about...
Yeah, there's, there's one item that I would like to, us to put into the budget. I believe we did it last year. I'd like to use the, some of the ALRA funds that we pay the LEAP number one bill in the months of July, August, and September, which is going to be heavy usage months for utilities. That, take that portion out of the utility calculation, which will lower some of the electrical costs to our citizens and everybody, businesses and homes alike will hopefully get a little break during one of a high usage periods that we've got.
Okay. Does the council sound good to add that into that and use the ALRA funds to, to put that into the budget? We did, we did it last year, I mean, so. We could add it and then, I mean, is everybody in favor of adding that to the current budget?
Yes.
Anybody against it? Okay, all right, that's, I think that's a good thing. You're looking at about 100 something thousand dollars a month savings overall, so it's almost like another rebate check, but anyway. All right, anybody else?
I think overall, everybody pretty much was minimal. You know, they didn't add a whole lot, didn't do anything.
They, they've done very good on running their departments. They've done very good.
Sometimes. And they were needed, things that they mentioned seemed to me were old and needed, so...
Yeah.
For me, Alderman of District Two, I know the sewer is my, maybe you can say, trying to get that project done. I see every money looks like it's on the agenda, so it looks like we're moving forward, getting things done, but I hope that by, before the end of this election, this term is out, I hope we start pulling dirt and doing something with that project. I see that it looks like, it appears that things are going forward with it. I know Ms. Lorraine also is working on different sidewalk projects. I appreciate her, you know, I mentioned that for the district as well. So those were some of the things that I mentioned in the past for District Two. Also, I have this. When related to the budget to discuss at the last meeting, I went out of town to a meeting in Baton Rouge. And the reason why I'm speaking pertaining to this is because it deals with the finances and the money that is utilized to be expended for the alderman. The city paid my registration only. The mayor stated at the last meeting that he was not aware that I was attending, but my registration was a pay. So don't want to harp on that part, but what I am here tonight to propose to the alderman, since we're talking about the budget and policy man that was voted in approval in 2019, I think the board says the authority lies in the mayor and the board. So the board also has authority to give the mayor or the board approval for any out-of-town expenses that need to be met and paid. So tonight, I'm here to ask the board to approve from the April's meeting on funds where I went out of town that were not reimbursed back to me. And then also, that was inclusive with my old traveling hotel. I also, per the policy manual that on page 22 it states and also says that pertaining to the budget, if we are making any request to go to any meeting, we need to come before the mayor or the board. So I am coming before the board tonight, also saying that I will be in attendance of the August meeting, the end of the year, the eleventh May meeting, and I'm asking the board on tonight for approval so I can, funds can be met and paid and I won't have this issue again.
You through?
Yes.
Okay, when I talk, don't interrupt me, okay?
Excuse me.
Don't interrupt me, Mr. Gardner.
Go ahead.
Okay, because I didn't interrupt you, I let you talk. Okay. Our policy and procedure says conference lodging. The mayor has the authority to approve the actual cost of conference lodging for any single Oxford brand or standard room when the traveler's staying at the designated conference hotel. The mayor's approval must be provided to allow lodging expenses to be billed directly to the municipality. Detailed lodging receipts are required to be obtained by the traveler and submitted to the clerk upon return. No reimbursements are allowed for the cost of attending functions unrelated to the conference, tours, golf tournaments, et cetera. Mr. Gardner, I have told you, we have money budgeted for travel and this year's $15,000 in the budget. You don't have to ask, you have to ask me for approval. You have not done that. Your problem is you call employees to do these things for you and you don't have that authority. That authority lies with the mayor. I have the authority to direct employees on what to do. Every other, every other person in here calls me if they want to go to something. And do, why can't you do the same? And because that's all I'm asking you. I have the money ready to reimburse you and I would make sure, I'd ask the question, "When do you want in to travel? How many nights are you going to stay?" That stuff I've got to approve. You can't call our clerk and say, "Make my reservations for me. Make my, all my arrangements for me." That's not what your job is. That's my job. And I'm telling you, if you'll come in and sit down with me, I'll get you reimbursed because in the top of that, when it comes to paying these bills or paying something for it, it says that, and I'm going to read this and we're going to move on. It says, that it, basically it says, anybody that does not follow these guidelines, if they can be, that we can hold these reimbursements until they're resolved. And that's what I'm doing. And I'm just waiting on you, walk in my office. Right now, I've got an expense sheet that you got overstated because you didn't, you didn't get a government rate on a hotel, which if you would have called and done it originally, you could have got a government rate, we'd have got you hooked up. We would have done that for you. But you've got to come in and sit down and talk with me. You can't call the employees. That's all I got to say about that. So you can get, and we can, and we can reimburse it. We'll, we'll register you for the convention, come in and tell me what days you want to travel, what days you want to stay, what kind of room you want, and we'll take care of it. But no, you're, you're not going to come in and talk to me and so that's, that's an issue. And you've got to get, you've got to get over that.
I'm talking to you now.
Okay.
So I'm asking for my money in front of the board and the public and everybody for you to reimburse me. Can you please reimburse me my funds back that the city owes me?
Okay.
Secondly, I'm asking and telling you, per the handbook, it states and says that I have to come before the board or the mayor or whomever to ask to go in August. I'm asking you that now, so therefore I don't need to. If I'm telling you now, I don't need to come in your office. Because I don't want you saying I stole a bottle of water or a pen or anything from the town. So I would rather communicate through you if need be through email or text or something of that nature where I have it documented.
Okay.
So right now, I'm asking you in front of the public, in front of the board, can you please approve my check to be reimbursed? Because if one goes and everything's paid for them, it should be the same for the other alderman that's with.
Okay. That's not what this board is for. We're here to take up this budget, but you come to my office and you sit down and tell me what days you're traveling and all that, and then I'll do that. I'll make the reservations for you.
I will email you. Will that work?
Huh? No, I want to talk to you.
I don't need to see you face to face. What you need to see me face to face for?
How do you represent your District Two?
I don't need to see you face to face.
How do you represent your District Two?
I can email you and you can email me back. It's nothing that we need to talk about face to face.
Let's move on.
I don't know the...
I make a motion with your...
Okay, all right, you're right. All right, we're done with the budget discussion? Any more discussion? Okay, all right. But Day, I'm sorry.
But Day, I'm sorry. I came to election.
I make a motion with your...
We got to, we got to adopt the budget.